Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. And if members of the public would like to attend the meeting, they may watch this meeting on burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. Information about our meeting packets and all of the information can be found on our webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on our agenda is announcements and presentations. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Our regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, August 8th at 5:30 PM, and Tuesday, August 27th, a 22nd, at 5:30 PM. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, August 15th, at 5:30 PM. We have a special work session, which is our quarterly roundtable with our leadership team, and that's Tuesday, July 25th, at 5:30 PM. We have a governance meeting, and this is on participatory budget, and this is the public comment portion of the governance process, and it's Tuesday, August 8th, at 6:00 PM. We have a special work session for Department Strategic Plans presentation, and that's Tuesday, August 15th, at 6:30 PM. We have a special work session, and that's our budget. We're continuing to work on all of the budget pieces throughout the whole process, and this is Tuesday, August 22nd, at 6:00 PM. All meetings of the council are held here in the council chambers unless it is noted. And tonight, we are honored to have a proclamation in honoring Mr. Ranjan Karke with Science Six, and I will do that from that side. Members of the council and citizens of Burnsville, tonight, we recognize Science Six, whereas Science Six was founded in 1985 in Burnsville, Minnesota by Linda and Steve Harris, and whereas in 2019, Mr. Raj Bandari bought Science Six and asked his friend and countryman Ranjan Karke to be the operations manager and vice president of their high-performance manufacturing company. Since its founding, Science Six has produced liquid chromatography and mass spectometry parts, whose uses include drug testing, contamination analysis, pesticide detection, and more. Whereas on April 30th, 2023, Science Six was at the White House, being honored by President Biden, Vice President Harris, and the U.S. Small Business Administrator Isabella Gassias Guzman. Administrator Guzman said, "I am delighted to congratulate Science Six owner Raj and team leaders Ranjan and Lisa for using the tools and resources available to them to grow their innovative business worldwide." And whereas Science Six was recognized and received the 2023 Small Business Exporter of the Year Award because of the company's hard work and passion, and have led them to find success both domestically and globally. And whereas Ranjan Karke, Vice President, came to the USA from Nepal to pursue his education and currently resides here in Dakota County with his family, we are proud of Mr. Karke's leadership in creating a culture where his employees thrive. Whereas Science Six looks forward to accelerating its collaboration with the city of Burnsville as it continues to grow the business and support our community through job creation and retention. And now therefore, I, Elizabeth Couse, Mayor of the city of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby applaud, recognize, and celebrate Science Six for their accomplishments as an innovative small business and their contributions to our community. We are proud of Science Six' excellence in work culture, product, and service, proclaim this 18th day of July, 2023. And Mr. Karke, if you could come, and we'll have a picture taken, and Ms. Thompson is going to take this photo. when you invited us to come to your business, when the second gentleman was there to again highlight and honor the work that you've done. And we're proud here in Burnsville that a company in Burnsville is recognized for its global work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience or online to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will come before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins?
No one online, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We will move on, and the next item on the agenda is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, are there any emergency items to come before the council?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Okay. Members of the council? Okay, we will then move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Ms. Collins, anyone online?
Madam Mayor, we have someone for 4-0.
I am pulling 4-0. Mr. Lindberg, does staff want to pull anything?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Okay. Members of the council? Okay. I am pulling 4-0, and this is the application of Sustainable Safari LLC for a PUD amendment for an indoor zoo use within the Burnsville Shopping Center. So that item is going to be pulled for a separate discussion and vote. May I have a motion to adopt the balance of the consent agenda?
Full moved.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Members of the council and citizens of Burnsville, this is an application of Sustainable Safari LLC for a planned unit development amendment for an indoor zoo use located at 915 County Road 42 West within the Burnsville Shopping Center. And our community development director, Mr. Jeff Thompson. Mr. Thompson, one of the questions that I think we need to continue to explore is the use of the zoo, and also to have further information with regard to the public health aspect of it, and all of the other agencies that have oversight over this kind of use. And do we have all of the appropriate zoning mechanisms in place? We have a PUD amendment. Is a CUP a possibility? And I think these are things that I would ask that staff look at, and if you could elaborate, because I think one of the things that we might want to do, members of the council, is to continue this item so that we can get all the other information that will help us to make an informed decision with regard to public health and other items that have been raised by different members of the public. Mr. Thompson, can you speak to this? Because this particular use is already in operations in other areas of the metro area, specifically Maplewood. Can you speak to that and also to the governing agencies?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So as you introduced, brief background, the Burnsville Center is regulated from a land use perspective, from an existing planned unit development throughout the history of it. And as we've received requests for uses that are not outlined in that PUD, we have traditionally amended the PUD for those particular uses. So that's the application that's before the city and been submitted to the city by Sustainable Safari. As you mentioned during, after the Planning Commission public hearing, we've received numerous public comments with primarily focused on concerns of animal welfare, public health, and public safety. And so we think probably the best, our recommended step for the council is to not take action tonight, to continue it, and we can talk about that, to allow us to go back and review kind of all of the licensing requirements around public health and public safety. You know, in general, the Minnesota Department of Health is the public health agency for Dakota County and for the city of Burnsville, so we want to ensure we're understanding their requirements, as well as we know there are a number of federal and state requirements around exhibiting and displaying kind of wildlife or non-domesticated animals. So we just need some time to work with our attorney's office to review all of those licensing, both federal and state licensing requirements, that those are understood, and to ensure ultimately that the use, should it move forward, complies with and meets all of the public health and safety standards for Burnsville Center. So with that, we think, we can also look at the land use approvals for this, and that's ultimately best probably to refer back to the Planning Commission for review of these license requirements, as well as to review the planned unit development and any performance standards or conditional use permit standards that could be developed from those licensing requirements.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilmember Gustafson?
Is underlying zoning out there?
Mayor and council, the underlying zoning is mixed use.
So pretty much anything can go in there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
In the applicant, you've spoke to the applicant about this being pushed?
Mayor and council, correct. We have informed the applicant that this would be on the agenda tonight, and that we staff would be recommending continuance of the item to a future meeting.
And they're okay with this, so that we have all of the information? Okay. You're the applicant?
Yeah, we're right here.
Yeah. You want to come and speak? And I know that, yeah. Thank you for coming this evening.
I wasn't sure if I was supposed to speak up.
Yeah.
My name is, sorry, this is the microphone. My name is Robert Pills. I am the owner, creator of Sustainable Safari. So I did talk to Sarah Maden, and she did inform me that you guys had some questions to, wanted more answers for, and I'm fine with providing whatever you need, so whatever it takes.
Thank you.
We've been doing this a long time, so.
Yeah, and we appreciate that you're doing it. There's, we just want to make sure that people are informed and are comfortable with the care of the animals, and I know that your focus is on education, as I watched the meeting, and you already have this particular use at Maplewood.
Yes.
And so I think one of the information that we should get is how is it going from the city's point of view?
I'm an open book for you guys, so.
Thank you for your being here and being transparent with your operations and the care of the animals.
Yep, that's priority.
Are we asking questions tonight, or should we wait till we come back?
Yeah, when we get more information, unless there's questions you have for staff to make sure that they, that they get all of that information.
Well.
Are there information that you want staff to look into?
I guess I don't want to open a can of worms tonight if we're going to be coming back, but the specific email that we received from the Humane Society and the several points made in there was where I had more specific questions regarding citations and such, so Greg's already aware of my questions on that, so I just got to get some reiterating that publicly.
Yeah, certainly, Mayor, Councilmember Workman, absolutely, those are things that we'll take a look at. I think that the benefit of us spending a little bit more time here is that we can answer any of those questions. We can certainly make sure that the city attorney's office is involved, and that you all have the answers to the questions that you might have after the Planning Commission has a chance to take a look at the item being referred back to them, and then getting it back in front of you.
I'd also like the applicant to have the ability to respond to some of the things that were in that, and maybe add some context, I guess, at that next meeting.
Yeah, and our staff can share that email that we received from the Humane Society. You can take a look at it. Everything that comes to us is open to the public. Yeah, and it seems like you've been successful at Maplewood.
Yes, we have. Yes, overwhelmingly.
Yeah, okay.
The animals speak it, so, I mean, there's always critics, so, and we have to, you know, answer their questions.
Yeah, and that's all we're doing, is to answer the questions, make sure that we have an open process, and that you can be successful in the work that you do.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Members of the council, may I have a motion to continue the item?
Motion to continue?
Mayor and council, if the motion could be to refer it back to the Planning Commission versus to continue.
To continue and refer to the Planning Commission.
Full moved to continue this and send it back.
Wait, wait, wait.
Go ahead.
What is the process?
Since there's going to be new added information, it goes back to the Planning Commission so that they're informed with, if there's any new, with all the new information, so that they can review it, and then comes back to us.
So how long are we talking here? How long of a delay?
I'll let Jeff, do you want to speak to that in terms of timing?
Yeah, Mayor, let me just pull up a quick calendar and...
While Jeff's looking, can I just ask a point of clarification? So if Planning Commission's looking primarily at land use?
Yep.
I think it's pretty well established that mixed, this will fit in?
To the land use.
To the land use, so.
But if there's a standard, a performance standard added to it, then they should be aware of it.
Okay. Can you clarify that?
Yeah.
A performance standard, if there's going to be an additional performance standard, the Planning Commission ought to be aware of what that is, but it's going to come from the research and the work that our staff is going to be doing.
All right, this is now sounding lengthy.
Well, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, Mayor and council, if this were to be referred back to the Planning Commission, likely we could put that on the August 14th Planning Commission agenda, which brings it back for council consideration on August 22nd, tentative, of course, on all the information and getting responses from the applicant, but that would be kind of the tentative schedule.
Mr. Pills, is that all right with you?
The sooner the better for me, too.
Okay.
We've been doing a lot of work to get to this point, so the sooner the better.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm in your hands, so.
Yeah, we'll, our staff will work quickly, and with the schedule that we have, it'll go to the Planning Commission and come back to us.
Okay.
And they can take a look at it. If there are no other performance standards that are over and above what we already have, and that they've already looked at, and perhaps it doesn't, but that's something that staff will have to look at. Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we send this back to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission on August 14th, and we see this back at council August 22nd.
Okay, all right.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you so much for coming in, and we'll do our best so that everybody has the information and they can all feel comfortable, and you proceed.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we are at the regular agenda, and the regular agenda is the resolution directing the city staff to submit a Dakota County Platte Commission variance application related to access spacing guidelines for the Burn Hill Third Edition. And Ms. Deserout, thank you, boy, this, so I want you to know that City Manager Lindberg and I have had, and our community director have met with Commissioner Workman on this particular item. So you want to present this to the council and to the community of Burnsville and what this means?
So, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I have a history for you of dates. So the Dakota County Platte Commission has an ordinance in which they review all plattes that are adjacent to county roads, and so they reviewed Burn Hill Third Edition on March 29th, and then there was a letter sent with their comments on April 5th, and that letter had a variety of comments and issues, most of which the developer had no concerns with, except for there was a requirement for a temporary permit for the write-in, write-out access on County Road 42. That write-in, write-out access was generally in the same location as the existing write-in, write-out access, and the temporary permit would say that they, at any time, Dakota County could revoke that permit and close the access, but they didn't give any timeline for when that could occur, and so the developer had indicated that that would essentially...
A deal breaker.
It was a deal breaker for them and for their financing. So staff had a number of meetings with Dakota County staff, initially April 12th, and then April 27th, and then May 18th, and then June 15th. So we had a number of meetings to try and work through the issues. From the temporary permit, they had offered instead just a write-in, not a write-in, write-out, and they would remove that temporary permit. The developer indicated that that was not going to work for them either. Another option that they had provided was this, if they were to rework the internal circulation on the site, that it could possibly work for them then. The applicant put together a plan to try and do that, but it was minor improvements that they were making to the internal circulation. And then most recently, oh, and I have in between there, the Planning Commission recommended approval, the city council recommended approval, and this has still been an outstanding issue where the Platte Commission hasn't officially approved because we don't have that condition met. So on July 13th, Dakota County staff indicated that the process would be, that a variance would be required, and per their ordinance, the variance would be needing to be applied for by the city. So the variances to the access spacing guidelines, County Road 42 is a principal arterial, and they have access spacing guidelines per their 2040 transportation comprehensive plan. They have a Highway 42 corridor management plan, which is online and which we were part of, and we had provided a recommendation of support, or, and on page 42 of the management plan, there are these access guidelines. So full access, all movements every half a mile, partial access every quarter mile, and then there is this part about write-in, write-out, write-in, write-out access allowed every eighth mile, with the county finding that there's benefit to the county system. So there's a caveat to that eighth mile. The image on the screen shows that the existing driveway is more than an eighth of a mile from County Road 5, and slightly less than an eighth of a mile from Irving. So I did ask the question just recently, if they just shift that driveway 130 feet, which would be the difference, would that meet the eighth mile? The county indicated that the variance is needed because we need to prove a benefit to the county system with that eighth mile access. Here's their corridor management plan, a screenshot from it, and the circle in, or the oval, I guess, in red, is this access, shows write-in, write-out, existing, and then it shows that as the short and medium term recommendation, but there is no recommendation shown in the long term. And so we have been under the operating assumption that there was no changes to the access per their plan, and that this could resume. So they have indicated the variance process is needed, and here's the timeline for that to be as quick as possible. We need to provide an application to the county stating why the one-eighth mile access for write-in, write-out is of benefit to them and to their system. And then on August 2nd, their Platte Commission will review our variance application. If they choose to deny the variance application, we can appeal it, and we would appeal it to the full county board through first the physical development committee and then the full county board. So we're about six weeks of processing for this variance application, and at this point, we do not have any other options, so the staff is recommending to adopt the resolution to direct staff to apply and follow that timeline.
Thank you. You did a nice job, but here's the deal. We've had two really big studies on County Road 42. There was a study that was done that went from the border of Savage all the way to Rosemount. That was there, and I'm looking at all of those studies. The other is the most recent one from 5 to 35. That write-in, write-out has always been there. There is nowhere that I can see on these studies that says that it's temporary. The other factor that has, that confounds me is that they only look at their spacing guidelines, however, they don't look at other factors like, were there any, were there a lot of accidents, incidents?
So there, in the past 10 years, have been five accidents at that intersection in County Road 5.
Were they fatal?
No fatal.
There were no fatal?
Mostly property damage.
Five in 10 years. I've not heard from any of the insurance companies about that this is being, you know, this is a hazard.
You get lower rates if you live right by that turn. I'm a fire state.
You know, and I don't see anywhere in the guy, in the study, that says this is temporary. It's there. So they adopted it and everything. We adopted it. We all adopted, both plans. You know, if we're going to have to go through their process and ask for variance, we'll do that, but I, this is economic development, and I know they say that it's, they just don't look at economic. So if you're looking at safety, well, 10 years, five little fender benders, no fatality. And so this is going to cost the city of Burnsville if we don't get that access. So I'm grateful to Commissioner Workman and the work that she's doing in advocating for us and for these projects here in the city, but I'm confounded, but we will, members of the council, approve and adopt the resolution so that we'll go through their process, but it's, from my perspective, it's, we've gone through these studies, and it doesn't show me, unless I'm missing it, Ms. Deserout, where they say that, you know, if there's going to be redevelopment, that it has to go away. Never have seen that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it does not say that, but it does refer to these access spacing guidelines. So it is not clear in their plan, and so at this point, if the council directs staff to approve, to apply for the variance, we'll use all these facts that we know, and we'll justify the need for the variance.
Okay. Councilmember Gustafson?
I just have a quick question. I, you probably already answered it. If this does... I just have a quick question. I, you probably already answered it. If this doesn't happen, if we don't get the variance, what happens to this project?
So I think Jeff can answer that.
Yeah, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, Mayor and council, we have had, this, the transportation system and access for this site is, the developers told us is critical for the, any redevelopment of this project. This has been an ongoing conversation with the city, with Ms. Deserud and the developer. They have clearly stated to us that they have made changes to access. They know they have a challenging site with three county road frontages and getting access, but the County Road 42 access, they have said, is critical for any redevelopment of the site, and that they will not move forward without that access. It's not just the developers want, they think it's, it's important to get any financing for the redevelopment. They also said it's a requirement of the tenant leases, and so it puts a lot of things in jeopardy for this redevelopment should that access go away. They have also said that they just want to maintain what they have today, which is a write-in, write-out access, and they, any sort of temporary restriction which allows the county at any point in time to revoke it is, would jeopardize the project. So they just, they don't need something more than what they have today. They just need to maintain that access, write-in, write-out, in order for this project to move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, didn't a developer also comply with some of the county's request onto Irving?
I can, I can see to that. So the county requested that the access on McAndrews be write-in, write-out only, and they have complied with that, and they have asked for an additional right turn lane into the site. So they're, they're building a right turn lane into the site on McAndrews. And then on Irving, they had asked for a clear east-west connection to Irving. It, it isn't maybe as clear of a connection as the county had hoped, but it's there. There is an access onto Irving, a full access onto Irving, which then brings them out to the existing signal for all directions of, of turning movements. So if someone wanted to come out of the Cub site and wanted to go east, their two options are to go out to Irving, full access at that traffic signal, which is the easiest, or what I think the county is concerned about is going out and a right, taking the right out and then doing a U-turn at County Road 5, which is a safety concern. I do think that the Irving full access is the more appealing, so that, that people are going to do that. They're not going to try and do U-turns once they learn that Irving is a full access traffic signal.
It appears to me that the applicant has been working very well to meet some of the requirements from the county. The one thing that they're saying is that the write-in, write-out on 42 is critical to their business, and it's been there, and it's been functioning well in the last 10 years. And this PUD goes back to the 80s? Yeah, that's when that development was, was built. No problem since 1980 in the last 10 years, five fender benders, 10 years, and prior to that, probably not. Okay, we have someone that is on virtual who would like to speak, Ms. Collins?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Hicks with the developer said he is just available for questions if the council had any questions.
Oh, okay. We don't have any questions for them. It appears to us that they've been very much in, in compliance and working very well with our staff, both engineering and community development, to get this done. But we'll, we'll, we'll do what the county wants us to do. May I have a motion, please, to adopt?
Yes. I would ask if Greg and our legal team would be okay with us lobbying the county as council members, in addition to our staff.
Mayor and council, I will let the city attorney answer that question.
And Mr. Shepherd?
Mayor and council, I, I think we should let the variance application get on file first, and we'll, I think we can work it through the planning committee first and see where we're at, and then we'll, it may not even get to the commission.
It's going to go to the board. She just outlined the process. And as an elected official, there is no way in the law that says that we can't make phone calls to board members to advocate for our project.
There's, Mayor and council, I'm not saying you can't advocate, I'm just saying that right now, we're going to go through the committee first, and then it will, will be appealed to the board.
We will do all of that. The question was, can we make phone calls to members of the board? People make phone calls to us all the time.
That's correct.
It's part of the public process.
I just don't want to muddy the water, so I was.
There's no muddying of the waters if you call and ask someone. They need to hear from us.
Very good.
I plan to do it.
Okay.
A motion to apply for the variance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Thank, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. We stand adjourned.